Good morning and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Minneapolis City Council. My name is Barbara Johnson. I'm council president and I'm joined by my colleague, Councilmember Blong Yang. And before our council meetings, sometimes we have the opportunity to recognize outstanding individuals in our community or outstanding events. And we've got a couple of things this morning, a couple of people to recognize. And the first we're going to do is a young woman who has been an outstanding athlete in our community. And it's always really fun when we have our young people up here. So I'm going to turn this over to Councilmember Yang.
Thank you. Good morning. Please come up. Right with me to my left is Tania Riley. And this is a very special person. I'm going to read the resolution and then we can just kind of go from there. Say a few words and we'll just pass it down to your coach and the A.D., okay? All right. And so with us today is Tania Riley, right next to me. Next to her is her head coach, Charles Walker. And you know, I don't know you.
I'm one of the assistants of the building.
Okay.
Bula Verdel.
Assistant coach Bula Verdel. And then right next to her is the assistant or the athletic director, Leo Lewis, or Dr. Leo Lewis. Okay, so I'll read this really quickly. This is a resolution of the city of Minneapolis honoring Tania Riley, the fastest girl in Tania Riley is a proud Minneapolis North high school student athlete who played an integral part in the success of the 2016 Polar Track team. As a sophomore coached by head coaches or head coach Charles Walker and assistant coaches Cecilia Clements, Bula Verdel, Steve Ellis, and Edvante Copeland, Tania is the 2016 Minnesota State Class A champion in the 100 and 200 meter dash. Tania set the Class A record in the 100 meter dash during the preliminaries with a blistering time of 11.95 seconds, breaking a 20-year-old Class A record. Tania ranked ninth in the nation in the 200 meter dash, led the pack in the 200 meter dash finals with the time of 25.06 seconds, leading the top three finishers who were all from Minneapolis. And the two other ones to Councilmember Reich from Edison.[168.81][168.81][laughter] No, that was a compliment, Councilmember Reich. I meant that as a compliment.[175.62][175.62][laughter] Tania's success continues the academic and athletic rebirth of North High. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Minneapolis that the city council on behalf of the people of Minneapolis hereby honors the outstanding athletic achievements
I just want to thank everybody for showing up. I want to thank all my coaches, my parents, family, and everybody that was just there for me. And yeah.[220.12][220.12][laughter] Sorry.[222.12][222.12][laughter]
Thank you guys for showing up and supporting Tania and Bishop Howell also. And we're looking forward to seeing Tania in the 2020 Olympics if she stays healthy.[234.84][234.84][applause]
Just real quick, I met her when or I knew about her from a young lady because she runs with a summer program, Track Minnesota. So when I found out that she was coming to Minneapolis North, I said to someone, "Why?" But it was such a great blessing. And the reason I said that, she had the opportunity to go anywhere. And I'm so thankful and so grateful that she's using her talents at North.
That is so good.[265.83][265.83][applause] Well, I think North High has used to be in here a lot this year. We've had some high achievers from our high school. And we're always welcome to exploit the fact that they are achieving in multi-dimensional levels in the classroom as well as on the track in this case. So we thank the city council as well as Councilman Yang for inviting us and certainly to highlight one of our high achievers, Tania.[292.12][292.12][applause]
We'll give the resolution to Sean and we'll give it to you a copy in a little bit, okay?
Okay.
Thank you so much.
And our next person to recognize is Bishop Howell. So why don't you come on up and[325.62][325.62][applause]. Good to see you. Good to see you. Thank you. And Bishop has been just a wonderful and his wife have been just a wonderful, wonderful presence in North Minneapolis and helping us keep our community safe, keep people on a good spiritual keel, which always helps everything. And we're just really delighted that Councilmember Yang is going to honor him this morning.
Good morning.[356.52][356.52][applause] So I have to tell you all that I know this man by Bishop Howell. I didn't even know his first name. I thought it was Bishop. I thought it was Bishop. Okay?[370.12][370.12][laughter] So this is a resolution honoring Bishop Richard D. Howell, Jr. Bishop Richard D. Howell is a pastor at Shiloh International Temple in North Minneapolis, right on West Broadway there. Bishop Howell is a third generation of his family to lead their flock at Shiloh, following in the footsteps of his parents and grandparents. Bishop Howell has been the pastor and overseer at Shiloh for over 20 years. Bishop Howell has been active with Minneapolis Police Department, the Hennepin County Sheriff's Community Advisory Board, the Rotary Club, the Minneapolis Urban League, and the His Works, United Stairstep Foundation as a leader, a pastor, and a community representative. Bishop Howell is a, I can't even pronounce it, dioc-?
Diocesan.
Diocesan. Over the 7th Episcopal District of the Pentecostal Assemblies of the World, which includes Minnesota, Wisconsin, North Dakota, and South Dakota. Bishop Howell is a graduate of North Central Bible College, St. Thomas Christian College, and Friends International Christian University, and the bearer of honorary doctorates from Enon?
Enon.
Enon Bible College and St. Thomas University. Bishop Howell's personal and pastoral commitment to North Minneapolis has served as an example for his congregation, the community, and the city. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Minneapolis that the city council on behalf of the people of Minneapolis hereby recognizes Bishop Richard D. Howell's legacy of service to the residents and communities of Minneapolis, especially his lifetime commitment to the spiritual health of his flock in the city.[467.43][467.43][applause] And I just wanted to say this really quickly. While Bishop Howell is speaking, if the congregation or his family and friends want to come up, you know, we'll take a picture with everybody up here, just with Bishop Howell, just so that everyone has that. And Bishop Howell, please go ahead.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilman Yang, and to President Johnson, to the rest of the city council, to all of you here today. Like George Bush might say, "Thank you all for coming."[503.43][503.43][laughter] I'm humbled to be here today. There are not enough words to really articulate what's in my heart to be here standing honored and to be able to accept this with the utmost humility. I want to say first I thank God for this opportunity. There is one woman in my life right now that if it hadn't been for her, I wouldn't be here. That is my mother.[531.54][531.54][applause] There's a cute story. My father, before he earned his bachelor's science degree in elementary education at the, from St. Cloud University, he was a postal person and he loved to carry mail. But when it came to winter time, he hated the winters, Minnesota winters. So he decided he was going to move to California. And his mind was made up, he's going to take he and all his family to California. It was my mother who said, "You can go, but me and the kids are going to stay right here."[564.12][564.12][laughter] If it had not been for that statement, we would not be here today. And so we're honored to have my mother and of course, my wife of 42 years. I appreciate that.[572.82][572.82][applause] I'm proud to be from Minneapolis. I am a native of Minneapolis, born and bred right here. I'm proud to be here. And our city has gone through many, many changes. And there's no other place we would much rather be than to be right here where the action is at. Thank you all so much for this opportunity. I'm blessed and humbled. And God bless all of you. Thank you.[597.91][597.91][applause]
Call this regularly scheduled meeting, Minneapolis City Council, to order. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Quincy.
Here.
Worsami is absent.
Goodman.
Present.
Frye.
Here.
Palmasano.
Present.
Gordon.
Here.
Kano.
Here.
Reich.
Here.
Bender.
Here.
There are 12 members present.
We have Coram present. Next item on the agendas is adoption of the agenda. And there's a motion by Councilmember Yang to amend the agenda to add under the order of resolutions, "Resolution Honoring the Outstanding Athletic Achievements of Tania Riley." Is there second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, that carries. Any other additions to the agenda? Seeing none, a motion to approve the agenda is in order.
So moved.
Second.
The agenda as amended is in front of us. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, that carries. Next, we have acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 2, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, that carries. Next, we have referral petitions, communications, and reports to the proper committees.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, that carries. The reports of the standing committees are next. And the first is committee of the whole, and that committee is chaired by the council vice president, Elizabeth Glidden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have three items on the agenda for approval. The first is the Target Market Program Ordinance. And along with that, there's a separate motion, and I'm not sure if I can make it with my, okay, it looks like I can make that with my original motion. And so I'll go back over that when I move for approval. Second, there are amendments to the Workplace Regulations Ordinance. And third, there is a staff direction to convene a work group regarding the home sharing industry work group. For item number one, my motion will also include moving an additional piece, which I will read, and it has to do with the fact that there are a lot of chapters that are impacted by the Target Market Ordinance. And we needed to do a couple additional introductions to complete all the things incorporated in the ordinance. And this is authored by Councilmember Quincy and myself, as well as Councilmember Worsami. We're moving that unanimous consent be granted to introduce the following ordinances, amending the Minneapolis Code of Ordinances, amending provisions relating to the Target Market Program, and that said ordinances be given their first reading. And this is Title II, Chapters 17 and 18 relating to Administration, Finance Department, and Administration Purchasing. Title VII, Chapter 139 relating to Civil Rights in General. And also Title 16, Chapter 423 relating to Planning and Development, Small and Underutilized Business Enterprise Programs. So I would like to move the full agenda of the committee of the whole, and then I would like to make a brief comment on item number one.
Councilmember Glidden has moved the Committee of the Whole report, including a motion to, for unanimous consent for changes to the ordinances affected by the Target Market Program. Any discussion on any of those items? Councilmember Quincy, and you want to go first?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Glidden.
Okay. Sorry to pull that privilege, but I wasn't able to attend the committee of the whole where the full presentation was made on the Target Market Program. And I really regret that in part because there is such an amazing and big staff team that has done a tremendous amount of work to bring forward this ordinance, and then a lot of other support system items that are necessary to, you know, the working of the city and how we do purchasing in order to make this work right. In simple terms, the Target Market Ordinance is a change that will allow qualified small businesses to essentially compete against each other, similarly-sized businesses, for contracts up to $100,000. This is a program that has been utilized in many other jurisdictions. I think the state also has a version of this program. And it's a race-neutral program. So there is, it is open to everyone, but we know because we have looked at demographics of businesses, that this will benefit local businesses as well as women-owned businesses and businesses owned by people of color. And so it is part of a larger strategy around supplier diversity and just a huge amount of work that has been done on that. I have, the different pieces of the city that have touched this work include our finance department and purchasing, most specifically. CPED, which more generally does a lot of business outreach, so they play a very significant role, as well as civil rights, which works on contract compliance issues and sort of has an overlay, even though they won't have direct responsibility for what happens with oversight of this ordinance. And then I want to say thank you to, special, just personal thank you, to Nuria Rivera van der Maij. She's our deputy city coordinator. And I have heard from many people on this very large staff team that without her ability to bring together all those experts, all those talents, and figure out how are we able to kind of row the same direction, that we just wouldn't be at the place that we're at. And so that's not to the track from the talents of those who gave their expertise to this. Just to say, sometimes it takes someone helping make sure that we're all at the table together, we're able to complete our work. And so I think you bring some special talent to that. And our new director of purchasing, Pam Fernandez, will be overseeing this program. And so congratulations to her as well. And just last piece I wanted to say is I had personally actually heard of this program from residents, and I'll call it one of those residents, Lenny Chisholm. So in our community, business owners and folks who work with small businesses had thought even some time ago, this would be a good program for the city to initiate. So I'm glad to see this come to fruition. Again, it's part of a larger body of work around supplier diversity. And thank you to all who helped make this happen and our great staff team.
Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I was prepared to do a lot of those comments. I made some during the committee of the whole meeting. But this is an important step forward for the city. Not only will we be able to engage more residents and more businesses and spur economic growth within the city, we're also going to make it better for the city's procurement system. We're going to have more opportunities and embrace more competitive pricing schemes, providing better opportunities for many people to participate, as well as for the city to actually save money during this process. But I knew the council vice president would list and acknowledge all those great staff members, but I knew she would also neglect the most important person in this process, and that was herself. Council Vice President Glidden showed extraordinary leadership over the last, I'd say, five, six years as we've been working on this together. So thank you very much for the work you've led on this, Council Vice President.
Any further discussion on the committee of the whole report? Councilmember Worsami.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I would just like to echo what Councilmember Quincy said. Thank you to Council Vice President Glidden on her work on this, and also to all the city staff that worked on this. Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk call the roll on the committee of the whole report.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Community Development Regulatory Services report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Community Development and Regulatory Services is bringing forward seven items for approval this morning. They include the regular liquor business and gambling license applications, as well as the downtown public realm framework plan, a modification number 126 to the 9th Street and Hennepin redevelopment plan, and some very simple changes to our home down payment and closing assistance program. With that, I'll move items one through seven for approval this morning.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the Committee Development and Regulatory Services report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee report. And that committee is chaired by Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Madam President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee is bringing forward three items for approval today. The first is amending a grant agreement with the Minnesota Department of Health for additional lead poisoning intervention funding of $3,000. The second is accepting another grant from the Minnesota Department of Health for Lead and Healthy Home Services in the amount of $15,000. And the third is accepting a grant from the Minnesota Department of Transportation in the amount not to exceed $5,000 to provide tree planting on Department of Transportation property in Triangle Park near downtown. And I'll move all three items for approval.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report. And that committee is chaired by Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. Today, we have six items for approval. The first item is a joint powers agreement between the state of Minnesota, BCA, and 911. Second item is a travel expense donation acceptance from the major cities. Chiefs Association. Third item is a contract amendment with MPHA for security services. Fourth item is a contract amendment with Hennepin County for operation of a detox van. Fifth item is a contract amendment with Stillwater Emergency Management for federal homeland security grant management services. And the sixth item is a travel expense donation acceptance from the Center for Law and Social Policy. And this is for a civil rights employee to go to a conference. And with that, I will move all six items for approval.
Councilmember Yang has moved the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. I've lost my computer screen unlocked for some reason here. So if people need me, Councilmember Yang will help me here. Okay. Next, we have the Zoning and Planning Report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. We have three items from zoning and planning. Item number one is an alley vacation on Gerard Avenue North. Item number two is-
Does anyone have any questions for Chair Wright? Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. Today, we have six items for approval. The first item is a joint powers agreement between the State of Minnesota, BCA, and 911. Second item is a travel expense donation acceptance from the major cities. Chief's Association. Third item is a contract amendment with MPHA for security services. Fourth item is a contract amendment with Hennepin County for operation of a detox van. Fifth item is a contract amendment with Stillwater Emergency Management for federal homeland security grant management services. And the sixth item is a travel expense donation acceptance from the Center for Law and Social Policy. And this is for a civil rights employee to go to a conference. And with that, I will move all six items for approval.
Councilmember Yang has moved the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Reports of the Special Committees and the first is the Audit Committee and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We heard several reports in Audit Committee on Tuesday this week. The one that is being forwarded to council is the State Auditor finding on people's access and update on that. Both receiving the report and referring the matter to the city coordinator to report back to us through Committee of the Whole on progress by the end of the year.
On the Audit Committee Report, any questions, concerns? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. I've lost my computer screen. I'm locked for some reason here. So if people need me, Councilmember Yang will help me here. Okay. Next, we have the Zoning and Planning Report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. We have three items from zoning and planning. Item number one is an alley vacation on Gerard Avenue North. Item number two is passage of an ordinance amending the pedestrian oriented Overly District on Central Avenue Northeast. And item number three is passage of an ordinance amending our zoning code for regulations about skyway design. I'll move all items.
Councilmember Bender has moved the zoning and planning report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, I just want to mention on item one, and I appreciate the committee taking this action, approving an alley vacation on an exciting project in the Shingle Creek neighborhood in North Minneapolis. We have new homes being built in a great park side at Humboldt Greenway is what it's called. And one of the homes is on the Parade of Homes. They had an open house last Saturday and had great attendance. And we are seeing a lot of interest in those homes. And I invite anybody to go up there and take a look. They're beautiful, two-story homes with the actual look at maybe doing some different styles because it's quite a big, big project. So I'm excited about it and we've had really great attendance and interest in the project. They're market rate homes, so no city subsidy in this project. Clerk, call the roll on the zoning and planning report.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Reports of the Special Committees and the first is the Audit Committee and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We heard several reports in Audit Committee on Tuesday this week. The one that is being forwarded to council is the State Auditor finding on people's access and update on that. Both receiving the report and referring the matter to the city coordinator to report back to us through Committee of the Whole on progress by the end of the year.
On the Audit Committee Report, any questions, concerns? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Introduction and Referral Calendar and the first is a Flood Plane Regulations Ordinance. Councilmember Palmasano noticed at the last meeting now she has a motion to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to the zoning code, amending flood plane regulations and maps consistent with the requirements of the National Flood Insurance Program. Any discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. We have resolutions next and the first is the Bishop Howell Honorary Resolution. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have the Tom Neiman Honorary Resolution. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have the Tom Neiman Honorary Resolution. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have the Mayor Al Hofstad Honorary Resolution. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have the Breast Cancer Awareness and Metastatic Breast Cancer Awareness Honorary Resolution. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have the Tania Riley Honorary Resolution. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Any announcements? Announcements are next. Councilmember Glidden. Okay.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to note an event that just happened, which is yesterday, the city along with many other partners hosted its third annual Trans Equity Summit. It was, and I was excited about the location, it was at MEA, the Minneapolis Institute of Art. And I think it's been a while since we've had a partnership event with the city and our flagship museum, one of our flagship museums. It was a great event. I want to especially thank the Transgender Issues Work Group from the city of Minneapolis where we have staff from all sorts of departments throughout the city, working on issues year round along with community members who sit at the table. And as far as putting on the event itself, also wanted to thank the city coordinator's office, the efforts of Spencer Kronk, and allowing his staff to help with significant events like this is very much appreciated. And Jenny Shabu, who probably doesn't get much recognition but does an amazing amount of work, we thank you for all the detail that you put into making this happen.
Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam President. As many of you know, today is the very first day of early voting. Early voting will be taking place from now until Election Day in early November. In addition to the regular early voting system, we will have four satellite precincts that will be open. Usually you got to come all the way down to City Hall and now you can either go to the Water Bar in Northeast, the Urban League in North Minneapolis, the Roof Depot in South Minneapolis, or of course, the Early Voting Center just a block away from City Hall. Additionally, National Voter Registration Day is on September 27th, so if you aren't registered now, make sure to get registered. If you recently moved, you should have voter registration form that is presented to you upon your arrival at your new apartment. And finally, Kids Voting in Minneapolis, you can go to kidsvotinginminneapolis.org to register to volunteer. We need volunteers to enable the kids to participate in their own election day, the same day as election day. So please go to kidsvotinginminneapolis.org to volunteer and register.
Any further announcements? Seeing none, I do want to point out that we have a resolution that we passed earlier honoring our former mayor, Al Hofstad, who actually was mayor of Minneapolis two separate terms, but he also was a city council member. He recently passed away and we, a number of us were able to attend the memorial service for him. It was lovely. But he was a man from northeast Minneapolis, very proud of that. He had a special interest in lower income people, people who needed affordable housing, elderly people. And so a number of the accomplishments that he had while he was in office tended to those needs. And he was also the chairman of the Metropolitan Council, so he served this community in a lot of different ways. And so I'm just going to ask for a moment of silence to remember Mayor Hofstad. Thank you. All right. With that, we have finished our agenda. And so a motion to adjourn would be in order. And it's a motion to adjourn to a closed session for purposes of discussing litigation matters.
So moved.
All in approval say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Thank you.